16.
Keep going. Now, keep going, please. Keep going. Yes, thanks. That's perfect. So I wanted to, I'd like to start with the last page, so the bottom line, so no one looks ahead. This is the summary of the fiscal year. And you can see that revenues were 116, 611, 556. Now, this is on the cash basis and unaudited. And these are the operating funds, so they don't include the debt service fund or the capital project fund. We don't have the life safety fund anymore. So in the operating funds, revenues of 116 million, 611, 556, with expenditures of 110 million, 229, 614. So an annual surplus of 6 million, 381, 942. These percentages aren't quite right. During the year, we divide by the annual budget, but at the end of the year, we should actually divide by the actual expenditure. So the actual fund balance percentage is 46.54% instead of that 45.78. So that's just a quick summary. Now, Dave, if you could go back to page one where it says revenues. The biggest reason that the year came out better than expected, on the revenue side, there's a couple of things. The first one is property taxes. Our June collections were, they came in much more than expected. 50.47% of the extension. It's very unusual. We averaged 48.62% in June. But, so collections came in much better than expected. The downside of that is that we'll get less in fiscal year 17. So it, we do this financial recap and the budget kind of at the same time because a lot of these timing variances end up impacting the next year. And so these, so this extension will end up being, it'll come out of the taxes that normally come in the fall or in the following year. The other thing on the revenues here, the state categorical programs, that's the other big item. We had only budgeted for three quarters and we got four quarters. So that's worth approximately 1.4 million. So that was a big reason that the revenues came in better than expected. The total operating revenues came in at 103.7% of budget, 5.2% over the prior year. Our last three extensions, the 2015 extension was a CPI of .8 plus 1.65% related to new construction, 2.45%. 2014 was a 1.5 CPI plus 1.76 related to new construction, 3.26%. And the year before that was a 1.7 plus 1.11 for new construction, which was a 2.81. So the last three property extensions, operating, not including debt services, have averaged 2.84% per year when our property taxes make up 84% of our revenues. So generally speaking, you would expect our revenues to increase approximately 2.84% per year on a normal, kind of a normal basis when you can see here that they went up 5.2%. So it's much more than you would expect revenues to increase year over year. And then if we go to the expenditure side on page three. That's right. It's perfect. The one thing you might notice here, that the salary and benefits were at 99.8% of budget. That is, I give Helen Perez with her position control and budgeting that that is just right at where we want to be, 99.8% of budget. The capital outlay item there, you notice that we bought, we had to buy that web filter during the year. Came up during the year and it was projected to be in the 16-17 budget. We needed to do it right away, so we put it into the 15-16 year. So that is why capital outlay is over budget in the education fund there. And next, in the 16-17 budget, you kind of see that item going down. So it's the reverse. So on the expenditure side, total operating expenditures are at 98.2% of budget. So that came in better than expected also. On the transportation fund, if you look at that purchase services line, we changed contractors on our busing and I think that made a big difference. We, I felt like service was much better in 2015-16 and you can see some significant savings there in that purchase services line. So I'm really happy the way the bus contract is going. Then, Dave, if you could go to page eight. Actually, yeah, page eight would be great. Yeah, at the top. Can you go to the top? I just wanted to point out on the state categorical payments, if you, you can see here that in FY13, on the cash basis, we collected three quarters. Then in FY14, we collected five quarters. FY15, we collected three quarters. And then in FY16, we collected four quarters. That makes it really hard to budget. And so in the 16-17 budget that we're going to talk about tonight, I budgeted four quarters again. Last year, I budgeted three and we got four. I went back to budgeting four. I don't know if that means we'll get three next year, but it is hard to budget this and I wanted to point that out. And it's 1.4 million, so it's a big swing. And maybe between now and next month, when we do the final budget, we'll get some more information. I don't know. But, so that's really what I wanted to talk about as far as the financial recap. Is there any questions about that? Yes, please. So again, I like to start at the end and to get to the bottom line right away. And the budget is, this budget, the tentative budget. Now, there will be changes we make between now and the final budget. But this, the tentative budget is almost a break even on the operating side with an annual surplus of 193, 182. That's a very, very, very small annual surplus or almost a break even budget. At the very bottom, it's showing the fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures. I did, in the monthly financials, every month, I talk about, you know, the rationale for maintaining fund balances. We, in the finance committee, have talked about it a lot. The timing of our collections of property taxes, property taxes being 84% of our revenues, that April and May are the low cash flow months when, and so it's best practice to avoid borrowing. So that is the first rationale. The other thing, fund balances, reserves provides our educational programs greater margin of safety by increasing our ability to absorb future negative financial changes which may not be able to avoid. And those concerns that we've talked about a lot, the potential, there, I get mailings from candidates all the time talking about property taxes and the property tax freeze is a concern that that could happen. And we've talked about that. If CPI is 1.5%, then that could be worth 1.4 million a year. The teacher's retirement system, there's been a lot of talk about the TRS cost shift. If the employer contribution was shifted to local school districts, that is a $4.4 million item that we've heard could be phased in four to 16 years. The other item is the state funding distribution, the single funding formula. The Senate Bill 16 was worth 4.5 million to District 205. The Senate Bill 1 was worth 4.7 million. The other concern, the Cadillac tax is now pushed off to 2020, but it was estimated to hit us in 18 at 600,000. The state funding, we talked about that already with that 1.4 million for one quarter. So that's kind of all the reasons and rationale for having fund balance. These fund balances have improved over the last five years, which is good. The, we had significant budget cuts in 2010, '11, '11, '12, and '12, '13. And since then, we've had four years. This is the fourth budget in a row where we did not have to make budget cuts. And that is certainly something that we want to avoid. And so the fund balances give us some margin of safety from avoiding budget cuts. So if, Dave, if you could go to revenues. So on the first page of revenues, you can see that it's showing property taxes in the operating funds is 83.61% of our operating revenues. The other local sources like replacement taxes, tuition, interest earnings, those are about 5%. Then the state sources are at 8% and federal is 3%. And then, Dave, if you could go to the next page. This is where the significant collections in June impacted the revenues in, the property tax revenue lines in the budget for next year, for 16-17 year. So you can see that here where it's showing small decreases in the levy. The corporate personal property replacement taxes had that error that they were going to be recouping. This is the estimate that the Department of Revenue has on their website for fiscal year 2017. This 1 million, 535, and then we have 250,000 in the IMRF fund. Are the, is the, that's the estimate that the state has out there for replacement taxes right now. The pupil activities, you see a decrease there. That's because last year, we had the Chromebooks at grades nine through 12 where this year, we just would have new students or freshmen. So that's the decrease that you see in pupil activities revenue. General state aid is, is an increase that I think we have talked about. That was in the new budget that was passed, was an increase in state aid. The special education line here, that is the 3 million, 985, 210. You see that? That's the four payments, the four quarters. So we budgeted four quarters there. So that's why that special education line is a 2.17% increase. Other than that, if you go to page eight or nine, Dave? Capital projects. Capital projects is where we're now paying for our summer maintenance projects. This revenue, this TIF surplus distribution was once in last year's budget because we thought we would get it somewhere, January, or initially, they had told us January, but then spring. But now, we still haven't gotten it. But this is the revenue source to pay for the summer projects that happened already. So hopefully, we will get that in order to pay for the projects that we had this last summer. That, that's the 1.3 million right there. And then, so next summer's projects will be paid out of the 2018 TIF surplus distribution. That's TIF 1. Where last year, it was paid with this transfer from O&M. That was the one year before we were going to start getting these TIF surplus distributions where we had to pay for the summer projects out of the O&M fund. You could see that 1.4 transfer from the O&M fund right there. So that's really it on the revenue side. So, Dave, if you could go to expenditures. We've talked about the budget, with the operating budget being a service organization, that we are primarily salaries and benefits. It's 65% salaries, 13.69% benefits. So we're, we're almost 79% staffing in this budget. So we will be talking about staffing for now. If you go to page two, we'll, we'll come back to staffing, salaries and benefits. The purchase services increased there. One of the reasons for it is, is we've got more professional development in the budget for the new math initiative or pilot that's going on this year and then new curriculum for next year. There's also in supplies here, there's math textbooks that, that has an increase there from the math text. The capital outlay, we talked about. We had pushed that web filter back a year. Other objects, that increase is related to special ed tuition. It's a hard line item to budget, special ed tuition. You could kind of see the history there of, of steady increases. But it kind of can fluctuate a little bit to that other objects line in the education fund. The non-capital equipment line there that is down 8.4%. The tech, technology lease payment has just come down some is the reason for that decrease. In the operations and maintenance fund, the purchase services, you know, we've, we've budgeted a little bit less in utilities is the biggest reason for that. The increase in capital outlay, if you looked, if you looked at, in the recap of last year, we had budgeted to purchase some trucks for the maintenance department. In last year, we didn't, we didn't purchase those trucks. So we did budget to purchase trucks in 2016-17. The non-capital item is to purchase some scrubbers to help with the cleaning in the buildings. The transportation fund, this is where you kind of can see the history where we had, we had change contractors and you can see that we had three years there of increasing where it was in, three years with the other contractor there and now we've got a new contractor, but we're looking at a 3.17% in the budget. And then in capital outlay, that is the purchase. We buy an activity bus every year. We're trying to, we had bought, we had bought a whole bunch of them in 2001. Now, we're trying to buy one per year, so we ladder those, those out. And so we buy one activity bus a year. And then this van was for the transition center and that's paid for out of a grant. The IMRF is 3.2% increase. And then on the next page, page three, those are the capital projects. That's, that's the summer projects from this summer that we will be paying for, that will be funded by the TIF surplus distribution. So now, why don't we go to staffing? Couple of things on staffing. Salaries and benefits, the salaries obviously are impacted by staffing changes, retirements, resignations, hirings, new positions. The, the regular salary increases for the teaching staff was 1.5% plus step. And then the other support staff members, custodians, PSRP, was a 1% increase. And then we had the staffing compensation change for the administration where we, we, the administrators are now contributing towards health insurance. And we had that bump up for the administrators. That's in the salary numbers. As far as benefits, the PPO increase was 4.2%. The HMO increase was 6.2% and the dental premiums were flat. And then as far as the staffing changes. This page is fine for now, the first page. It's hard to see up there, but you can see that in school administrators, we had an increase of 1.0. That is the assistant principal at Hawthorne and Lincoln. We reduced special ed assistants 2.4 and we, we reduced that special ed assistant contingency. The minus one down below, which is central, central office director slash coordinators, that is the, we had reduced one coordinator in the district office. And then the certified teachers, certified staff, so it's teachers and other certified staff members, there's an increase of 20.3. I, for the board members, I broke down a little more detail on that 20.3 in an item, in administration there. But it is 7.1 FTE related to enrollment, a 7.1 increase, 13.2 related to instructional coaches. This 20.3 can be broken down at the elementary level. It's 9.75. At middle school, it's 3.6, being three being instructional coaches, and 6.95 at the high school. We're still, we're still fine tuning these numbers. We, this was the tentative budget. We had cut off position control a few weeks back. We're getting more and more information. We'll have this tweaked a little more. I know that Helen met with the high school and I think it's, it's, I think she found that there's two less at the high school than what that, this is showing right now. But there's going to be, there's going to be changes between now and, and the final budget in a month. I also, I got an email today about a couple of added sections. So it's still kind of being fine tuned. Plus, we didn't have all the people in the positions. So their salaries might change. We had estimates for benefits for all of the new hires. So there will be some tweaks between now and the final budget next month. So that's really all I had. Any questions?
Chris, are the capital projects that's being funded by the TIF surplus? The expected revenue to come in from the TIF surplus is approximately 1.2 million, is that correct?
1.3.
1.3. So Frank Shu does a very nice job of giving us a 10-year projection of what those capital projects will look like. Are we shoe warning our, or maybe a better choice of words, is picking what capital projects we're going to do based upon the TIF surplus?
Yes.
Or we are?
We are.
And what do we, are we leaving anything behind or deferring anything that maybe realistically, we shouldn't be deferring?
Well, we most certainly are deferring the maintenance costs at Lincoln. We, that's been going on for a long time. Just, some of the projects at Churchville and Fisher have been deferred to line up with the TIF 4. We're hoping that TIF 4, the TIF will start accumulating, accumulating funds in TIF 4 that the economic development and it appears to be developing quite a bit on, in TIF 4 will produce funds to, to fund some projects at Churchville and Fisher. I think Frank has currently has them in like 2018, '19, but you know, I'm not sure when the city would be able to fund out of TIF 4. We'll have to see. But that, that is based on EAV increases in that TIF 4.
Any of the deferred projects, were you? Any of the deferred projects, were you?
Well, I've certainly heard about the Churchville parking lot from several people, board members, parents, that kind of thing, that I definitely hear complaining about the Churchville parking lot, which is currently deferred till 2018, 19, somewhere in there. That's one that just comes to mind. I'd have to ask Frank his thoughts on other deferred items.
All right, thank you. I did lose my car in the pothole in Churchville parking lot.
Has the city given any explanation why the TIF money is not forthcoming?
Dave, have you talked to them about that?
Yeah.
They, I don't want, I want to choose my words carefully because I can't give you a precise answer, but to the best of my understanding, their cycle of budgeting and declaring TIFs and their understanding of our needs does not necessarily match up. In other words, when we are budgeting to do these projects and they don't necessarily operate on the same timeline we do, so they can, they have to go through their budgeting, they have to go through the process of actually declaring the surplus, et cetera. And they became aware of our needs over the summer and they know that, I mean, we've been communicating, but I think it would be a mistake for me to try to speak on the specifics of when they're scheduling their finance meetings and when they're planning to declare those around their audits. They, they seem to be on a different set of understanding than we did about our expectations of it being declared at a certain time and their expectations of when they plan to declare the surplus. So that's the best I can do, I guess. Certainly, we're meeting with them tomorrow at 4 o'clock and I can get you a much more precise answer of when they expect to do that. Every time I bring it up, they kind of seem to suggest that there is no finite deadline for when they have to do this and they're just going to do it, you know, as part of a process and it will happen sometime. You know, I, at one point I think it changed because they changed one of their processes and that got pushed back and then as to why they have not declared it yet at this point for this particular year, I don't know the answer. I can find out tomorrow.
The other thing maybe you could ask them about, and I don't know if there's any, you know, the background on this, but you could inquire whether there's any contemplated transfer of money out of TIF 4 into the newly proposed TIF 5. What we heard is we heard deferred maintenance at Churchville and Fisher, trying to wait until those commitments in the intergovernmental agreement that signed in 2011, or was it 2012? The TIF 4 IGA. And if they were to transfer money out of TIF 4 into TIF 5, it would mean moving those projects back even further. So I'd like to just get an understanding if there's any contemplation at all of moving money from TIF 4 to TIF 5 or whether that's out of the question.
Well, I think, I mean, I don't know that they'll give me a specific answer because the last time I asked that question, they said, well, there is no surplus, so there is no money to port. But certainly when we expressed our concern about the new TIF, that's something that we were extremely concerned about for obvious reasons and I believe that, I believe that they are probably looking to do that would be my guess. I, that's I think one of the advantages of why they constructed the TIF the way they did with the contiguous boundaries. So I will ask them that tomorrow as well.
Okay, moving on to meeting minutes. Are there any changes to our three sets of minutes? July 19, 2016, August 3, 2016, and August 9, 2016. Okay, hearing none, the minutes will stand as presented. Moving on to superintendent's consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda items A through D.
Okay, is there a second? Moved by John, seconded by Jim. Okay. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion passes. We have superintendent's action items. Go ahead.
We discussed this at the last meeting as part of the finance committee report, so this is the bond refinancing. Elizabeth Hennessy is here. We did explain it, I think in some detail at the last meeting, so I don't know if there would be additional questions or not because this is something that has been relatively routine over the life of these bonds. In fact, we just did it, did one last year. So Elizabeth, I don't know if, she's available for you if you have anything you'd like to
Tonight you've got the resolution approving the refunding of the Series 2007 bonds. They're callable January 1, 2017. This resolution authorizes the district to proceed with the refunding with a final approval delegated to the board delegates, which include the board president, the chairman of the finance committee, and the assistant superintendent for business. We just updated the savings. This bond issue has, is very short. We're refunding bonds consistent with a strategy of accelerating the payments, paying them off as early as possible. Current savings look approximately 2,387. So, and that's about 10.7 percent present value as a percent of the bonds refunded. So markets remain strong and this is our current estimate. We had our rating call on Monday to re-up the district's rating. Chris did a great job at presenting your FY '16 results and your FY '17 budget. Were very well received, so we expect to get that rating next Monday. Any questions, resolution or process?
Elizabeth, this is the last series of bonds that we can possibly refund, is that true?
For a while. The next time you can refund, I believe, is going to be in 2021, 2012 bonds.
And do you know off the top of your head, after we refund this at a savings of 2.387 million, what the total that we've done over the last few years, what that total savings has been?
Good question. I don't have that number, but I think it's north of 13 million. Do you have it?
I brought it this time.
Thank you.
So 12.6 million to date and then add the savings for the next one, so almost 15 million.
Yeah, just, right, 14.9. Yeah.
Can you summarize what that means?
I can. I can. So Karen's asked me to do a quick summary of what that means. So we've refinanced our bonds at a lower interest rate over the last five years and we have structured the payments of those bonds to pay off earlier. So like you refinance your mortgage and you decide to shorten the term of your mortgage by a few years and that's what we've done. So over, and our debt will be essentially paid off by 2025, is that correct, Elizabeth or Chris?
That's correct.
So by 2025, the taxpayers of Elmhurst will save 14.9 million dollars, which comes directly off of property tax bills. This is not money that is recycled into the school district to be sent by, spent by the school district. It is money that does not appear on your future property tax bills.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, any in motion for item A?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed 21 million general obligation refunding school bonds for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the district and for the levy of a direct annual tax efficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Jim. I have a roll call. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Moving on to approval of White and Company Phase 1 proposal.
This too is discussed at the last board meeting. Terry's here from White and Company if there are questions, but this is to allow us to move forward with Phase 1 of the proposal, which is associated with our Focus 205 work and has to do with developing potential long-term facility scenarios based on our building assessments and the community engagement processes fall and various cost, cost potentially associated with different options that we might want to consider.
Any discussion on Phase 1 proposal? Well, should we, well, he came last time. Should we just do a recap?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, could Terry, could he just give a recap from, from the last meeting? If you could give a summary of the work, the scope of work.
Got it, all right. So it's, there's been some pre-thinking about various scenarios and this would be to explore those scenarios further and either develop them a little further or select which ones should carry on or which ones might be set by the wayside. Getting into the drawbacks of the different scenarios, pluses and minuses, and then that would narrow the focus for the next phase. Is it too short?
So how do we decide, like what, how would you decide which scenarios to move forward and which are more viable than others?
Oh, well, it kind of depends on what they are. Could be quite a few out there. We would analyze them as far as impact to, potential impact to the different buildings and potential benefits. Some of the ripple effects that, on the face of it, when you come up with a big idea, look into it a little, discuss it a little further to think about what some of the further impacts might be.
Would it be fair to say that you're hanging the capital piece on what it is that Focus 205, all the capital impacts that would come about, all the infrastructure and building impacts from what they're considering?
Yes, at a higher level. And that would narrow those down so we could move forward in the next phase and start to look a little more specifically into actual impacts on buildings, do some more, get into the planning phase without having a laundry list this long, hopefully have one, have more focus to be more effective.
Thanks.
Thanks for that question.
And so this is, you know, input from District 205, Focus, excuse me, Focus 205. This is the request from, or input feedback from Focus 205 was to look at a longer-term facility master plan. And so this is the first phase of it.
Correct.
And then that will go back to, or be part of this Phase 2 of Focus 205.
Correct.
Are there questions? Jim?
If you can help clarify exactly what, are we going to take a vote on this? And, yeah, specifically there are two things in here. There are hourly rates not to exceed $20,000 and not, with zero specificity about what those hourly rates are. And then there is step two, which ranges from 50 to $100,000. So what are we?
We're going to wait, we're holding. We're looking at Phase 1 only right now.
Okay, so the vote we're taking is to approve a $20,000 budget item, not to exceed. And it's pretty vague as to the services provided and there are no hourly rates that we know of. Is that, is that correct or did I miss the hourly rate somewhere?
The services provided are that by the end of this fall, we are going to have multiple community engagement sessions as part of Focus 205, as well as community surveys to get input on various aspects related to our future planning. Part of that future planning has to include getting community feedback on potential facility considerations. And there are a multitude of different directions that we could go. In order to get the specificity to adequately inform the community, we have to go beyond simply just theoretical things. We need some more specificity that the architects can provide, potential pros and cons and costs associated with the different concepts that we would be asking the community for feedback on. So this would be for the work related to that initial planning for fall, for the fall Focus 205 work as it relates to these conceptual facility options.
So my understanding is that this is, instead of going to the community and saying, draw us a picture of what you want, this is us saying, tell us what you want, what you have in mind. These guys listen to what the community said through Focus 205, then they start putting together some options, some plans, the whole time remaining flexible, bringing it back so then the people can see, okay, these are kind of the ideas that came out of our discussions. We like them, we don't like them, we want to change them, we want to scrap the whole thing, whatever it is. Is that right? That this is kind of trying to capture what the community is saying and then putting it down, giving them options that they can look at and then the discussion continues from there? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's a decent summary of what we're talking about. I mean, understanding that the work actually began last year, this is just a continuation of the process. It's, we're drilling down into more specificity at this point.
Okay, go ahead.
Chris, you probably review and approve more consulting contracts than I do. Is it? Is it? Is it, is it common not to have a schedule of hourly rates of professional services?
It's a hard answer that with a definitive answer because there are certain, I'm thinking of a couple of professional relationships that we have where we've done business with them over the years where I understand what range the partner rates are and what range the associate rates are and, you know, how much is this document or deal going to cost me? And we get an idea of what it's going to cost and we go. So that doesn't mean that it's not good practice to have rates in there. It just depends on the relationship you have with the folks that you're contracting with.
Typically, we do include hourly rates with this type of a proposal. Typically, in the district, we don't work on an hourly rate basis. And perhaps we assume that because we do occasionally and the hourly rates would probably be on file, that we didn't need to attach them at this point. We certainly can provide those.
That'd be great.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, though, what you're saying is, this is a project and you're committed to providing to us the outcome that's outlined in this project and that we've been talking about. And so, I mean, it will be the plans that we're asking for, the participation in Focus 205, you know, all of those requirements necessary in this contract not to exceed $20,000.
Yes, the service is spelled out in Step One. The actual, the actual planning, you know, looking at building plans and such, that would come in Step Two after we've narrowed down the number of scenarios. That's part of why we can't be specific about the fees in Step Two because we not sure how many scenarios we'd be looking at in Step Two.
Technically, this is a very high hourly rate of $20,000. It says hourly rates not to exceed $20,000. You might want to rewrite that sentence and might want to have some sort of agreed hourly rate schedule delivered to the administration. I assume that people have looked at it, they've estimated the number of hours available to do this job and both proposer and client are comfortable that they can meet the outcome that's stated in here. But it's not an hourly rate of $20,000.
Correct.
Is this the first time that the district has engaged White &amp; Company to do work like this or is there an ongoing relationship?
Our relationship with the district started with the York High School project probably 18 years ago now. Typically, we work on a different fee basis, although we have done various studies over the years for, you know, just mostly study-type work like this where it isn't an hourly basis. In this case, it's capped at $20,000. So if we expend more than $20,000 worth of our effort, it's still capped at $20,000.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
I think the motion that's written into the agenda needs a little bit of wordsmithing as well. So I don't know, I think we probably need to do it now before we take a vote. I'm going to propose a motion off the top of my head here and I hope that you guys can fix the language as I'm crafting it here. That the Board of Education approve the initial phase of Focus 205 work related to long-term master facility planning pursuant to a schedule of hourly rates acceptable to the administration with a total fee not to exceed $20,000. You good? Why don't we second and just debate the motion?
Okay. Okay, is there a second for the amended motion?
I second.
Okay.
I don't feel, personally, I don't feel comfortable approving until I have a little more specifics as to what those hourly rates are. Verbally, we've heard that White is willing to, and I respect the long-term relationship that we have with White, and I'm not questioning that relationship. It just seems that it would be more prudent to approve a consulting project with a schedule of hourly rates. And it seems that White's verbal commitment here is to do the consulting that we ask of them and cap their fee at $20,000. But again, I'd feel more comfortable voting yes if I had a schedule of the different types of work to be performed and at what hourly rate.
The cap was in my motion and in the motion was also a delegation to administration to approve an hourly rate schedule. So I'm comfortable with that delegation. I don't know that we would actually be making changes to their hourly rate schedule. We rely on the administration to determine whether those particular professionals have stated an appropriate rate. But I'm comfortable delegating that function to administration.
I think, you know, I don't know exactly the best way to satisfy your specific concern, Jim, but I believe, and I'm speaking on behalf of White, but Terry's here, I believe that the reason this is written the way it is is because the Focus 205 process is relatively fluid and I think it's very difficult for them to be overly precise because we don't know exactly which direction things may go in the fall as the process unfolds. So I think it is probably difficult for them to come up with a proposal that had all the level of detail that you're asking for. And, you know, I can't, you know, I can't, and Malia's here as well. I don't think we can predict exactly how the feedback's going to come to us, how the surveys are going to come back to us and various different things. So we're estimating as best we can as to what's going to be involved in the nature of the project.
And actually, so far, it's just grown and grown. Like we rolled in the model classroom project, they just absorbed all of that. So, you know, we call meetings when necessary. That's all part of it. So I agree that I think it's more of a project price and they're agreeing to deliver the end result that we're looking for. And honestly, Jim, I, you know, I understand you want an hourly rate, but I think if they bill us by the hour, it would be a heck of a lot more than $20,000, to be honest.
This proposal says they are billing us by an hourly rate.
Okay. Not to exceed.
So what happens when the hourly, the billable hours get to $20,000?
Yeah.
That's what the cap is there for. We work without billing you more to the extent of what we described in Step One.
So when I go through, and I definitely, I hear your, I hear your concern on wanting more information, but when I go in here and I look at understanding that they're proposing a deliverable, they're proposing, this is, this is, at the end, this is the deliverable that we're going to give you at the end of the day and it will not exceed $20,000. I hear your, your perspective that said it would be nice to have, and I think we put it into our motion, that there will be a schedule of hourly rates just so we can ballpark what we got for our $20,000 or less, what we got for our $20,000 or less. So I think that part is captured in our motion here, that it will be a part of it and it will be there and we'll see it. It'll be part of the final audible document at the end of the day.
Add one more thing. The numbers in Step Two are a lot bigger than the numbers in Step One, so that's the incentive to deliver deliverable at the cap. And Number Two, just because you have a schedule of rates by professional class partner, associate, whatever, it's how you staff your project that drives the total. So, I mean, like I have rate schedules on engagement letters, but they can load that up with partner time or they can do it as efficiently as possible. Ultimately, it comes down to managing the vendor at that point. But I'm comfortable with the not to exceed 20 and that we are actually going to get the deliverable for 20 because they want to do Step Two.
That makes sense. I mean, what you're saying makes sense. I just want to vet this entire process out.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Approval of donation from Sandberg Middle School. Do you want to take that, Jim? Okay. Karen? Or do you want to introduce it?
The Sandberg PTA is donating $1,000 to Sandberg's PBIS program to restock their school store with supplies.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation of $1,000 from the Sandberg PTA to replenish their school store in support of their positive behavioral interventions and support team, PBIS. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by John.
So we want to thank the community, we want to thank Sandberg PTA. This is a great effort and a way for all the students to be engaged in. We commend everyone for working together and donating to our students and schools. Thank you.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes, it's seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Approval of donation at Emerson Elementary School.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation of $1,099 from the Emerson School PTA and 2016 fifth grade class to purchase a water bottle refilling station. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Emily. Go ahead.
Again, we want to thank the community and the PTAs, PTA at Emerson, for providing these water filling stations to the kids. It is, I think, almost at every school now and we thank you.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. With Superintendent's Communication Freedom of Information Act requests.
Okay, there were four. One regarding policy, which was granted, one regarding class placement, which was granted, one regarding specific bills, which was granted, and one regarding procedures, which was granted. The second part of the communication piece is District 205 identity video. We had talked last year about wanting to make a video to support our community outreach efforts and Malia's been working on that. And we are showing that at some of our startup activities this week and we'll use it for different purposes. Obviously, it'll be on our website, it'll be available to reholders, all those kinds of things. So we want to show that to you tonight. Emily, if you want to give some specifics of how we put this together?
Well, first off, I want to thank the principals and staff at York High School, Churchville Middle School, Field and Lincoln Elementary Schools for making time in their busy schedules in late May for us to bring Motion Source, the company we work with, onto their campuses and start gathering footage. We also want to thank our students who are doing the voice-overs in this piece, elementary through high school. I tapped into some of our kids who are part of the Elmhurst Children's Theater, knowing that they would do a great job and they did. So this video really is about our educational priorities. It's an overview of those, punctuated with images of our students and staff at work and play. And it reminds us that we are student-centered, future-focused as a community that values public education and believes all students can and must learn and grow. I want to also thank Kathy Schrader, our communications coordinator, for helping with this project. And as Dave said, we will be showing this at our Curriculum Night open houses and at the forthcoming Focus 205 meeting on October 3rd. And it will be posted on the district YouTube channel and we'll get it out there widely. So anyway, enjoy.
Welcome to Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205. A place where teaching is bold and students are highly engaged in their learning.
Every student and every staff member has a story.
Decisions are made based on what is best for students.
Future-ready classrooms are growing and evolving daily. Those classrooms model the four Cs, the future-ready super skills of communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity.
The educational needs of all students are met, challenging each to his or her full potential and ensuring a foundation for future success in life.
All means all. Rigor, relevance, and relationships form the basis of excellence. Excellence is embedded in culture.
Growth is a mindset. Diversity is embraced and celebrated. Opportunities for unique expression abound.
History provides inspiration.
Family and community are at the core.
We are committed to raising the bar to create bright futures for our children, preparing and encouraging them to reach beyond their dreams.
Thank you for doing that. Any comments from board members? Are we going to use it for Focus 205? Okay, it did, okay, I might have missed that. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Board communications? Any, any board communications tonight?
You know, one that I think is worthy of mention at a board meeting, I know we've mentioned it internally as we congratulate our faculty and our staff, but for the first time in several years, York High School was picked up in the national rankings by Newsweek Magazine and ranked York, correct me, is it 186 or 189?
Magazine and ranked York, correct me, is it 186 or 189? 186th best high school in the state of Illinois. And I, I'm sorry, state of Illinois, what am I talking about? In the nation. And, and that's quite an accomplishment. And it's, it's a testament to the people that work here, to the people that live here, and to our students. And I think we should celebrate that.
No. Okay. Hearing that, we'll move to upcoming meetings. Tuesday, September 13th, Board of Education meeting. Tuesday, September 20th, Performance Management Committee meeting, 6:30 PM. Thursday, September 22nd, Special Board of Education meeting. That's for the Cabinet and Board. We, we have our annual retreat for the Cabinet and Board that night. And that's an open meeting. We have Tuesday, September 27th, Board of Education meeting. Okay, we've reached the end of our agenda. Oh, sorry. Okay.
I make a motion that we return to closed session to discuss the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students as provided in the Open Meetings Act.
And approval of closed session minutes.
And approval of closed session minutes. He continues.
Okay, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Karen. Do we, it's just a roll call vote, and we need a roll call vote to go back to closed session.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, we're back in closed session.